Good evening, I'm gonna call our meeting for April to order. I'd like to welcome everyone. Thank you for spending your afternoon with us. If we can, please stand for an invocation by Chaplain Chinwood, please.
I'd like to have a moment of silence each month for those firefighters across the nation that have lost their lives. In this month, there were six. So let's have a moment of silence and honor of them. Dear God, we come today to give honor to those whose honor is due. Thank you for the service and the faithfulness of those who have served in the fire service and those that have given their life this month. I pray, Lord, that you'll be with their families, that you'll strengthen them, and just surround them with your comfort and your presence. And, Lord, we pray that you will be with our firefighters, that you will protect them, keep them safe from harm as they serve others, watch over them each time they go on a call, give them wisdom to help the others that are there. And, Lord, we thank you for the freedom we have as a nation and for those that have gone before us so that we can have that today. It's in Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comments on agenda items? All right, seeing none. I need a motion for the approval of March 2025 meeting minutes.
So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval for March 2025 financials. This is gonna be one motion for current expenditures and ACH payments, acknowledgement of financial report, acknowledgement of wire transfers and transfers between accounts, and purchase overs over $10,000. I need a motion, please.
So moved.
Second? Do I need a, I need a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We good, Mur?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. I, Commissioner's business.
Anybody, any?
Commissioner Kerr?
I'm good this month. Me too.
You good?
I just wanted to kudos to the city for the celebrate Benita. It was outstanding. And of course, our department was there, represented us very well. A nice turnout as always, but it was probably one of the nicest as far as decorating and the light show down there. City did an outstanding job. So I just wanted to really note that.
And I agree with that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. All right, presentations, Phoenix awards. Chief, I'll hand it over to you.
I'm gonna hand it over to Assistant Chief Broad. He's gonna take it over for tonight. Thank you.
And I'm gonna hand it over now.
No.
I will, I will let the chief hand out when I call names.
Yes, definitely.
Other than that. Deputy Chief Wilson had to attend to an emergency, so she left me something very nice to read. For our Phoenix award, I know we do a lot of these. They never get old. They're one of the best awards we can get as a, as a fire crew, fire medic crew. So I'll tell you a story about Mr. Sal Tassoni. Mr. Sal Tassoni is sitting up front with his lovely wife. On Friday, February 28th, Mr. Tassoni's wife were at the community pool in Village Walk, doing their daily, their daily weekday routine of swimming laps in the pool. This was a day that their routine took an unexpected turn. I think there's a typo here, Mr. Tassoni, and you can help me. Says after he did his hour and a half of laps in the pool.
One hour, and it wasn't for laps.
Oh, okay. All right. That's a long time. I would sink, I would sink and...
But I wasn't even doing laps.
These guys would be working on me if I was in the pool that long. So he proceeded to get out of the pool, and at that time, he became unsteady on his feet and fell to the ground. Fortunately for Mr. Tassoni, there were two individuals who were brave and without hesitation stepped in to render care. These two individuals performed chest compressions, rescue breaths, and once they were given an AED, they delivered shocks to the patient. The provider, they provided bystander CPR until first responders arrived. Engine 26 and Medic 37 arrived, and they worked together as a team to provide advanced life support care to the patient, which included defibrillation, airway management, and medication administration. After three rounds of CPR, Mr. Tassoni regained pulse and was then prepped for transport. Mr. Tassoni was transported. On arrival to the hospital, he was stable and showing signs of improvement. He does not recall the events of that day, but does remember waking up in the hospital Saturday morning. He is recovering from having a pacemaker defibrillator put in, and he continues to get stronger every day. There are many important links that need recognition for Mr. Tassoni's survival. The two bystanders, Art Rogers and Morgan Dempster. Morgan Dempster can't be here. Art Rogers is right here. He is a CERT member with Benita Springs Fire Department. And Ms. Dempster is a nurse, and she was visiting from out of state. Because of their quick actions, those first responders who responded were able to regain a pulse and ultimately return Mr. Tassoni to his normal life. Before I read off the names of the responders, our PIO, Nicole Holmberg, would like to mention a few things about our CERT and bystander CPR.
Absolutely. So as most of you in this room know, the chance of survivability for our patients significantly declined for every minute that they don't have someone who is intervening for that patient. By seven to 10% every minute that someone is not performing bystander CPR. So that means that even on our best times, our best response times, if we don't have someone who is there for that patient before we arrive, the likelihood that they're going to enjoy the same type of lifestyle that they had before their cardiac arrest event is probably not very likely. So to have our CERT members here in force, I might add, is really pretty outstanding. And to have Art and to have Morgan, who chose to intervene on Mr. Tassoni's behalf, is really exactly what we want throughout Benita Springs. And we take bystander CPR really very seriously in Benita Springs. We know that it's one of the first and maybe the most important links in the chain of survivability for our patients. And so because of that, we offer our CPR classes every month and even more so, more than every month, and we offer it at a largely discounted rate. Because we know that the more people in Benita Springs who are trained in CPR, the safer we all are. And more than us knowing that and believing that, Village Walk knows that and believes that. And under the guidance of CERT and specifically our two CERT captains, Mike Hertz and Peter Struble, who teach CPR every month there in, in Village Walk, and who have supported their community in purchasing six AEDs for Village Walk, I think it's because of their support and it's because of their encouragement and their community that Mr. Tassoni is here today. And I think he's just a testament of exactly what we hope the rest of our community will take hold of. And exactly what happened for Mr. Tassoni is what we want for the rest of our community. And the example of what is happening in Village Walk is what we hope will spread throughout the rest of our city. So bystander CPR is so important. We see it every day. You see it here today with Mr. Tassoni. And we really appreciate that Art and Morgan got involved for the betterment of our patient, and we love to see him here today. Thank you all very much.
And I wanna thank the CERT members too. You guys are in force. Got Team Green over here. All right, so the responders that can, are gonna come up, we'll clap at the end once they're all up here and take a nice picture of them. Lieutenant Paramedic Andy Chikis. Firefighter Paramedic Ray Perez. Firefighter EMT Chris Sanchez. We'll give him a minute to wheel up. He was not on the scooter when this call went down. He celebrated too much after that. Battalion Chief Jeff Milliken. Lee County EMS Paramedic Annette Franco. Lee County EMS EMT Alec Rosen, Alex Rosenbaum. And Mr. Art Rogers, our bystander CPR. And Morgan Dempster can't be here this evening. Hopefully, she's on by Zoom or not.
Well, you got a birthday coming up this year. Ready? One, two, three. Picture, picture, picture. Thanks, guys.
You got a license for that? Congratulations.
That's an amazing story, and we're glad you're, you're with us.
Jeff?
Can I have just one second?
Sure.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
I just wanted to mention to the CERT team that it was 15 years ago that I took the CERT program from Nicole. And three years later, it was her and her father suggested I try to become a commissioner. So it's been 11 years since I've done that, too. So thank you all very much. I appreciate what you do.
Amen.
Thank you. All right. We've got a promotional...
Want me to take a break now?
Yes, we do. We have Training Captain. So, you know, with the promotion of, at the time, Captain Wilson to Deputy Chief, that left a vacancy in our training department. So we, we put out and asked for people to apply for it. Myself and Deputy Chiefs all went through the applicants and did some interviews. And, you know, one name stood out, and one person stood out, and that'd be Gregory Wassman. You know, Greg came to us years ago from Lee County EMS, actually was a Lee County EMS employee and was down here, kinda seen what we did and said, hey, you know, I kinda like to be a firefighter. So he put himself through fire school and then applied here and then became an FTO, which is our Field Training Officers, and then became an Acting Lieutenant. And when that opening came up, you know, Greg rushed at the opportunity to apply for it. And he's been on the job for about two months now, and has done a heck of a job. He's hit the ground running, you know, taking the initiative and with the guise of Captain Boston to help him, you know, pushed him through this, you know, this initial two months, and he's doing great. He's got a little limp now, but that's just from FDIC's when we took him up training. So, you know, he hasn't shied away from anything we've asked him to do. And he's, like I said, he started, started out on the right foot, no pun intended. And I think his wife and daughter are gonna come up and pin him. So congratulations, Greg, on your promotion.
Craig, you wanna get a picture with your family real quick?
All right, while they're doing pictures, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. I'd like to thank our CERT members, like Commissioner Murphy did. And that's so great that you guys are involved and you make a difference, 'cause you just made one. So, and we're happy to see you, sir. So, we're gonna take a...
We still have one more.
We have one more?
Yes, yours is service.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Inspector Krupp could not make it tonight, but we do have one for a one-year service pen, making it off probation. That'd be firefighter Noah Leskin. A little bit about Noah, you know, Noah's one of these local kids, you know, he went to, he went to school here, he went to middle school. He's one of these guys that stuck with it, you know. He applied for us a couple of times and never, you know, never made it up that way. But he kept on trying, kept on trying, made some a few adjustments, and, you know, proud to say that we did hire him. And he's been a great asset to the Benita Springs Fire Department. After one year, he's taken classes, he's moving forward. He's just a great asset. And he's a local kid. And, you know, we like to see these local kids stay here, live here, work here. So.
Great example.
Congratulations on your, on your one year.
Great example of perseverance. Nice job.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
To a long, healthy career.
All right, now we're gonna take a little break to give you guys a chance to get out of here if you'd like to leave. If not, you're welcome to stay with us. We'd love to have you. We'll get started so we can get you guys out of here. Sure. Thank you.
Oh, he was in the bathroom. He's coming up.
He's coming, Chief. Commissioner Lohan saw him. Thank you.
I saw him come out of the bathroom.
Oh, I thought you said he was coming.
No, he's right there.
Yeah. He just took the long way.
Yeah.
There's a detour in the lobby.
All right, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Thank you, everyone. We're gonna move on to disposals. I need a motion to approve the disposals.
Wait, a motion?
I have one motion. I need a second, please.
I'll take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Old business. Commissioner. Murphy, do you have any old business?
I'm good.
Commissioner Lohan? Commissioner Kerr?
I'm gonna save it for next month.
Okay, whatever you wanna do, sir.
That's fine.
I have something for the chief. I just would like to ask.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm concerned for the heat coming up.
Okay.
Do we have everything in place for this, this season of, of heat mitigation for the guys? So whatever we need to do or whatever we need to get them, so we're, we're good to go.
Yeah, through the budget process, we have plenty of liquid IV. I know the Deputy Chief Schmidt has ample amounts in his office. The BCS both currently have, have it on their buggy and all the trucks have it. So if they need to be replaced, Training Division all has it. But I will turn it over to Deputy Chief Schmidt. We just came back from FDIC, and that's a little bit in my report, but we did learn something at FDIC and NFPAs. I'll turn it over to Deputy Chief Schmidt to talk a little bit about that, about heat.
Thank you. Yeah, we're, we're constantly looking into this. You know, we don't want anybody getting hurt out there either. So recently, we've started implementing the heat acclimation training. So guys are gonna be out there in their gear, training, getting used to the heat before it gets too hot. That's per the IAFF, which they recommend. We also are looking into hydration policy. We've seen some other departments that have hydration policy. They don't recommend liquid IV. They recommend some other ones. They also recommend taking it before shift and making sure that you're well hydrated 12 hours before shift as well. We still have the coolers. We have plenty of water. Another thing when it comes to the, the heat acclimation and, and training with the heat, one of the reasons we picked our gear through Fire Decks is because of the heat release in the gear. It's one of the best out there. So some of these other pieces of gear from other, from other companies can hold that heat in. They don't release it as well. There's a couple different things they measure. It's RET, THL, and TPP, and that's your protection from the heat, how well your heat is released from the gear. And Fire Decks, from the moisture barrier to the shell, has some of the best in the industry. So that is one of the main reasons being in Southwest Florida in the heat, we bought that gear specifically. Also, just came out that, I guess, Gore, who does our moisture barrier, has a new product out that is supposed to be even better when it comes to releasing heat. So they're, they're making innovations in, in doing this and helping our firefighters out when they're out there 'cause it's, it's hot, you know, whether it's the fire or it's the summer months coming through. So, you know, anytime we're doing training outside also in the summertime, it's usually in the shade. It's for limited amounts of time, but you can't eliminate it completely 'cause that in turn can cause injuries and other problems when it comes to fighting fires in the summer. Also, for the IAFF, it's also, one of the most important, if not the most important thing, is how guys treat their own health. And that would be exercise, physical fitness and conditioning, which guys get an hour every day on shift to do, which they should be doing, they're required to do. So if those guys are in good shape, as they should be, that also helps with this whole heat index. So.
Okay.
We're, we're looking at it. We continually looking at it. We're looking at the hydration policy. I'm getting them sent to me so we can look at maybe implementing something as well.
And the hydration policy also, I think it also addresses energy drinks while on shift.
Some departments have banned energy drinks on shift.
Is that something you're looking at, Chief?
No, we just wanna, we just wanna, if nothing else, it's gonna be more so an education portion of it. It's not recommended. You know, we really don't wanna go down the level of telling people what they can eat and what they can't drink, you know, with, with it being legal or not. So that's why we're looking at that. But again, as Deputy Chief Schmidt talked about, you know, it's the one hour of physical fitness, staying in shape, eating correctly. We're even talking with FGCU and Lee Memorial Health System about having a nutritious come in, a nutritionist come in and just talk about healthy eating and healthy lifestyle.
That's what I love to hear. I'm, I'm glad you're proactive and, and you're looking at this. Sounds like you're taking a holistic approach with their physical fitness. We're getting, we're looking, if it's not liquid IV, I need, and you need something else, just let the board know. We'll make it happen. Thank you for looking at that and, and the information that you, you gained. That's, that's great.
Yes, sir.
'Cause, and I know you guys are also concerned about that. Chiefs, let's see, I got a resolution, the change of authorized administration, administrators for the Mission Square Deferred Compensation Plan. I need a motion to approve that. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Make a motion.
I, I need a second, please.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chiefs' business. Chief?
So, a few things on here on my list. I'll go with the easy, easy things first. So, last couple days, we've been battling brush fires with the low humidity and high wind. So we continue to battle that. The brush trucks are all fully operational, ready to go. With the controlled burns, there's been, I think it was a 900 acre the last couple days. Over the weekend, it was with the crew. For the residents, they can call in and, and ask us. But the easiest and best way to do it is download, download our app because every time we have a controlled burn, Nicole, our PIO, puts it out on there and pushes it out as an, as a push notification. So they know. And even like today, you know, she pushed something out this morning. Hey, if you're seeing smoke, this is where it's from. Don't call 911 unless you see flames or whatever. Because again, we don't need to be going on false, I'll call it false emergencies, going over to check a smoke thing when it's smoke everywhere, then we have a real emergency where our crews may be needed.
I could smell the smoke at my house today.
So just if they would make sure that, you know, download our app and we push those things out so if they know. The other thing I have on here is annual report. It's being finalized this week. As you know, we had to put our performance measures on the, in the report and on our website. So that's kinda slowed us down a little bit this year. Again, I wanted to echo what Commissioner Lohan said about the crews and everybody for celebrating the excellent job. The city did an excellent job. The other thing I would like to bring up is that we hired six. We did job offers to six. They've all accepted. They're going through the onboarding process, being their physicals and background checks with a possible start date for a four-week orientation on April the 28th. So they'll have a four-week orientation starting on 28th, and they'll be on shift first week in June. With the first week in June being a, just a date and time, we are leaving Wednesday to go up to Appleton, Wisconsin to look at the fire truck that is replacing Engine 25 at Station 25. It's a mid, mid, mid-build inspection to kinda look at it, make sure everything's where it needs to be. Then it's supposed to be done sometime in May for the final. So we'll hope to have that in June and have it on the road sometime in July.
Who's all going to that, Chief?
Currently, right now, for this next trip is myself, Deputy Chief Schmidt, EVT Van Gelder, EVT Bogas, and Commissioner Lohan.
Okay, thank you, sir.
We do have a Business After Hours, which is the 17th of this month, which is next, just coming up Thursday. It's at the Naples Botanical Garden. If anybody'd like to go, please let us know ASAP as it's this one day, but it is, or this Thursday, and it is down at the Naples Botanical Garden, 4 to 6. Keep it on your radar. May 13th is the Incredible Awards, which are at the Hyatt Regency. And there is a ticket cost for that. So let us know if you'd like to attend that. I am still in, still having talks with a possible buyer of the restaurant at Station 27. We have met with them. I've met with them on site to look at a few different things. We also had a meeting with the city, Community Development, to, for the buyer to say, hey, here's my plans. I'm looking at a four to, three to four to 5,000 square foot restaurant. Is this out of the ballpark? And in no time did the city officials with John Dahmer, Jackie Gleason, Sean, I forget what Sean's last, Gibson, and yeah, Gibson and Mike Fegan, they were all there. And in no time did they say, no, that's out of the question. You know, talking with different, from ballet parking to off-site parking to all that stuff. So they're, they're looking to make it work. So we're still in talks with that. Looks promising. Haven't got an offer yet, but it's still in the works. Legislation session is, or legislations in full session right now, should be done. We're following a handful of bills right now, and the session ends May 2nd. So we should know something by May 2nd on what kind of bills came down. And finally, as we talked about, you know, with Deputy Chief Schmidt and myself, coming back from FDIC, we did take a crew of 12 up there this year. We are honored to have one of our, one of our personnel that went up there. Captain Boston, for the last two years or three years, taught the search class last two years. He's been invited with Grant Schwaleby at Estero to go up and teach. You know, there was two days of two, four, two days, four hours in the morning, four hours in the afternoon of classes that they talk about search and rescue for fires. So that's pretty neat to have one of our guys up there teaching the class and along, and along with taking it also. the class and a long, and a long-taken also. So he was up there Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. On Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, he took classes. So, you know, it's one of those things that we all got, we all took different classes up there. So it was a great time. Thank you guys for allowing us to go up there with the budget we had originally. We had budgeted for 10 to go. The budget allowed for us to bring two more this year, so it was a great opportunity for a lot. Hopefully it recharged their batteries and got people motivated to come back and talk about what they learned. And I think that is it for me. Any questions?
No, I was going to ask you about the, the property for sale, but thanks for bringing that up. Assistant Chief Brode?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
And Fire Marshal?
No, sir.
Fire Marshal Bill? We're, we're good. Okay, any public comment? Seeing none. Thank you for being here. We're adjourned. I need a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.